Call a committee on fiscal affairs to order. The first item of business is approval of the minutes from our meeting on February 3rd, 2014. I'll move them. Do we have any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And they carry. We have numerous action items to deal with today, and it will take some time as I read through them. But, action item 1B is a resolution authorized the college, colleges to purchase mobile and desktop computers, servers, networking, telephone and telecommunications equipment and cabling, related peripheral devices, software, including software as a service, maintenance professional and other technology-related services and training in accordance with the law and university regulations. Such purchases shall not exceed a total cost of $350 million over the term of this resolution, and such amount shall be inclusive of the student technology fee. Single proposed acquisitions with a one-time or annual recurring value of $5 million or more shall be excluded from this resolution and shall be subject to a separate approval by this board of trustees. The resolution remains in force and effect until June 30th, 2019. Similar resolutions were authorized by the board of trustees in January of 2005, and then again in September of 2009. I'll move the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions, comments for management on this issue? There being none, I'll move it. Not move it, but actually, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Action item 1C is a resolution to authorize the general counsel to execute a university-wide agreement to provide maintenance and consumables for CUNY's existing fleet of Conica copies, copiers. Such purchase shall not exceed $8,458,357.80, not a penny more, for a period of July 1, 2014 through June 30th, 2019. CUNY has approximately 2,000 Conica copies throughout the copiers, throughout the university. The continued operation of this copy of fleet is critical to the day-to-day operations of the university. I'll move this motion.
Second.
Seconded. Any questions, comments?
I have one question. Last, at the last meeting, did we do the same?
At the last, it was actually in the January meetings, we had to extend the current year's contract because we were using a statewide contract that had expired. So now, this is to move forward from July 1st on.
Got it. And it was subject to an RFP?
Yes.
Or was it just going all the way through?
Yes.
We've got coverage now, right?
Yes. We extended the current contract with, which was with Conica. We did an RFP, and Conica was the winner of the RFP process.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 1D is a resolution to authorize the university to choose a vending services company to provide, operate, and maintain snacks and beverages and vending equipment at some or all of the colleges and the central office in exchange for payment of royalties and a commission on sales. The term of the contract resulting from the solicitation process shall be five years with one three-year and one two-year renewal options, as determined in the best interest of the university. The contracts may be executed by the university and/or college auxiliary enterprise corporation to provide greater efficiencies and to maximize the funds generated for college and university purposes. CUNY would like to replace the current agreements, which involve different vending operators, with the grant of vending operation rights to a single operator. This arrangement will not involve the expenditure of any tax levy revenues. It is expected that the exclusive nature of the contracts, along with the rights to a significant number of university colleges, will provide higher revenues for each of the participating colleges and the central office than they have currently with the individual negotiated agreements. In the event that this does, that it does not, no contracts will be executed. I'll move this motion. Do we have a second? Seconded. Any questions, comments?
I asked Vice Chancellor Sapienza an email question about a college could opt in, and the answer was, or opt out. So this is not, this is an opt-in.
It's not mandatory. Colleges can opt out. That's correct.
And the second question is, if a college opts in, how does revenue sharing work?
Well, that process will work out once we have a formal agreement in place. But, what we're modeling this after is, last year, as I'm sure all of you know, we did a study, and our deputy chief operating officer, Bert Sax, is here, who honchoed this, and Jane Davis from our legal office as well, who did some terrific work. We did a pouring rights RFP, and Pepsi was awarded the contract, $22 million over 10 years. And so, since the pouring rights was a successful venture, we decided to try the next one, which is the vending. And by the way, while we're on the subject of Pepsi, I have a, have something to show you. This will be on the, on many Pepsi cans.
Four and a half million.
Four and a half million Pepsi cans throughout the metropolitan area. It's the CUNY Value Plus ad. I'll pass it around so folks can see it. So, as you, as you-
Don't tell Mayor Bloomberg.
Buy your Pepsi products.
It's only on small cans.
As you buy your Pepsi products, you'll see that. So, we had a successful Pepsi pouring rights initiative, in which that was awarded to Pepsi, and then we wanted to do the vending. Under the pouring rights, we did develop a formula by which the royalties were shared with the campuses, and once the vending process plays out, we'll develop a similar type of allocation for the colleges.
David?
So Professor Martel took my first question. The second one, though, is the logic here is that if we have more colleges on the contract, we'll get more money. Do we know which colleges are going to be opting in upfront? Or is this, we're gonna have this contract and hope that a few colleges jump in?
Can I speak to that?
Sure, of course.
We do know. We, when the RFP is released, there will be a list of schools, and I believe there are 10 or 11, who have indicated to us already that they wish to participate. Other schools, if we do enter into a contract, other schools could, at a later date, choose to opt in if they see it's very successful.
They would only be able to opt in after their existing contracts expire?
Unless there is a way to terminate those contracts earlier. There's a series of schools that have chosen not to at this time.
All right. Thank you.
Are we following the first lady's healthy vending policies?
What might they be?
She's encouraging us to have healthy, to have healthy foods in our vending machines.
I'm sure they'll have Cheerios. I think, who's making decisions on what's inside each one of these vending machines?
I mean, we'll start with the evaluation committee, who will be looking at that. But certainly, the RFP requests a lot of information about what sort of healthy and low-sugar snacks and beverages they provide. So that is something that we will be considering as part of the process.
So the vending machine contract will kind of balance out the pouring contract? Giving us net neutral health?
You can buy water in the-
You can't go to college without pouring rights. I'm sorry. All right. Any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Item E is a resolution authorized counsel to execute a contract on behalf of the university to provide a university-wide employee assistance program. The initial term shall be three years, and the contract shall include up to two one-year options for the university to renew in its best interest. Such purchase shall not exceed a total cost of $3 million. The employee assistance program will provide employees with a range of confidential and cost-effective programs, services, referrals, and/or other information designed to help employees balance the needs of their personal life with the requirements of work, and to address personal problems that may affect an employee's work performance. I'll move this motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Item's been seconded. Any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? Motion carries. Item F is a resolution authorized counsel to execute a contract on behalf of Baruch to purchase escalator maintenance service. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $220,000 for the first year of a five-year contract. Baruch College will use these services to provide preventative maintenance and repair services to its escalators. I'll move this motion.
Second.
Seconded. Any questions, comments?
Trustee, look, I'm sorry. If I can, I just want to add on this item that a few of the resolutions that we've looked at tonight, and those that we've looked at over the past several months, you see a theme that we're trying to do more university-wide contracts, have contracts in place that we can use our size and leverage our size to get better pricing. And we are doing that as well on escalator services. We're trying to enter into a contract that all of our colleges can use on escalator services. We're expecting that we're gonna get better pricing on that, and we hope to have that contract in place by 2016. And so, there is an out clause in this contract for Baruch, so that if we do get better pricing, that Baruch can opt out of this contract and go into the university contract.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this motion carries. Item G is a resolution authorized counsel to execute a contract on behalf of Baruch College again to provide creative services. Initial term shall be one year, and such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $360,000. The college will have a one-year renewal option. Will be use these services to provide creative services for the rebranding of the Zicklin School of Business. I'll move this motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this motion also carries. Item F, excuse me, H, is a resolution to authorize Baruch College to adopt a revised schedule of academic excellence fees by removing the maximum on the total amount of fees charged for students in Baruch, in the Baruch College business programs. The current fee structure caps the maximum fee collected regardless of how many semesters a student requires to complete the degree. The support needed by and offered to the students does not diminish at the end of several semesters, but remains and is offered through the entire duration of their studies. The college will continue to administer financial aid to assist those students who cannot afford the increase in the cost. I will move this motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item I is a resolution authorized counsel to execute a university-wide contract to purchase the JSTOR Digital Library on behalf of participating colleges from Ithaca, and that's spelled with a K. Such purchase shall not exceed $2.5 million payable in five annual installments. The university will have the right to terminate the contract at any time in its best interest. The university will use this contract with Ithaca to provide access to the Jstor Digital Library. Jstor provides full text access to almost 2,000 journals from more than 900 publishers, and is subscribed to by more than 8,000 institutions worldwide. I will move this motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Item's been seconded. Any questions, comments? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this motion carries. Item J is a resolution authorized the general counsel to execute a university-wide contract to purchase electronic access to digital commons on behalf of participating colleges. Such purchase shall not exceed 1.25 million dollars payable in five annual installments. The university will have the right to terminate this contract at any time in its best interest. The university will use this contract to establish university-wide repository of faculty, publications, and research presentations, graduate student works, such as theses and dissertations, and papers published while at the City University of New York. I will move this motion.
Second.
Item's been seconded. Any questions, comments? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this motion carries. Now we're, time for a report on the state adopted budget from Vice Chancellor Sapienza. And we've been handed out a small deck about the presentation.
Thank you, Chair Lloyd. Appreciate it. Sure as all of you know, the state budget for fiscal '15 was adopted a week ago, and I want to go through the impact on the university of that agreement. So, if you look at the handout, I'm gonna start with the community colleges first. So on the bottom of page two, the community colleges received a base aid increase of $75 per full-time equivalent student. Sure as all of you know, the state does fund the community colleges on a base aid formula for both the CUNY and the SUNY community colleges. So the $75 increase will generate about $6 million in additional state support for our community colleges. So we're very grateful to see that in the budget. It's the third straight year we've had a base aid increase in the community college rate. And if you look at the chart on page three, that small table, community college by funding source, you see that with the additional state aid for the community colleges and the additional revenue that's gonna be generated by the fall 2014 tuition increase, the community college is looking at an additional $30 million of new support for next fiscal year. So, I think the community colleges will be well-positioned going into next year. And that's before any adjustments that may be made in the city executive budget, which will be issued in about a month's time. Other things I want to mention about the community colleges, there were some legislative restorations that we needed to have in the state budget, items that were not in the governor's executive budget, $1.7 million for the accelerated studies and associate programs, about $600,000 for childcare centers, and about $30,000 for college discovery. All of those restorations were included in the final state adopted budget. So, really good news on the community college side. On the senior college side, there wasn't much change in the final budget as compared to what was in the governor's executive budget. Our fringe benefit needs, $43 million, was funded in the final budget, and that was terrific news. Our tuition from our $300 increase, effective in the fall, was recognized in the budget as well. And the restorations that we needed to have for the Joseph Murphy Institute and the SEEK program were restored in the final budget agreement. In addition, the SEEK program also received about a $600,000 increase. So that was really good news for that program. But there were no other new funds that were added for senior colleges. And fringe benefits was the only mandatory need that was funded. And so, some of our other items, like increased energy costs and building rental escalations, were not included. But, the mandatory need that we're most concerned about, that wasn't funded in the state budget, was salary step increments. I think as most of you know, our employees that are part of the professional staff congress do receive step increments every year. It's part of the collectively bargained contract that is agreed to by the university, along with the state and city. And step increments at the senior colleges and central offices cost us about $7.5 million a year. And fiscal '15 was among the third consecutive year that these costs were not funded. Historically, they had been covered by the state. And so, cumulatively, we're looking at really over $22 million in costs that we're gonna have to self-fund. And so that's our biggest concern, and something that we're gonna continue to push for going forward in future years. On financial aid, we received some good news, and those are listed on page three. The maximum award for TAP was increased from $5,000 to $5,165, so that was terrific news. The maximum TAP award has not been changed since 2002, so we're glad to see that increase. It's really gonna help our students who are TAP-eligible. It's also gonna help us from a financial perspective in that, since 2011, we've been mandated to cover the difference between our tuition and the maximum TAP award. So that TAP gap, this, in the current year, was costing us around $29 million. That was, $29 million that was generated from the additional tuition increase that we had to use to cover the difference between our tuition and the TAP award. So now that we, the TAP award is increased to $5,165, that liability is gonna come down by what we estimate about $6 million. So that was very helpful. The governor's proposal to have a STEM scholarship initiative was also included in the state adopted budget. And we have a note there on the federal budget that the maximum Pell Award is also going up next year by $85 to $5,730. So, good news on the financial aid front. Both TAP and Pell are increasing for next year. So, overall, the budget, we think it provides us with stability going forward. There are no reductions that are planned on the state side. The community colleges are getting additional base aid, which is terrific. They'll have enhanced tuition revenue from the fall increase, in which we'll be able to make some additional investments in both the senior colleges and the community colleges. And again, on the city budget side, the executive budget's gonna be issued in about a month, and we're in discussions with folks in the city, both in the mayor's office and in the office of management and budget, about our condition for next year. And we're hoping for a good resolution on the city's side as well. So, things are looking, things are looking stable, and, you know, we're really relieved and gratified with how the state budget turned out for us.
Questions?
Yes, Valerie.
So I noticed that the Black Mill Initiative was not funded on the state side.
Correct.
And, and then I also noted that CUNY Prep, not looking, its funding seems to have been, is in serious jeopardy.
Yeah, the Black Mill Initiative has historically been funded solely by the city. And this year, in our budget request, we did ask for a state match for the BMI program, because we do want to expand the program. And so that was part of our request, part of our lobbying efforts, but unfortunately, it was not included in the final state budget. So, we have $2.5 million from the city. We'll be lobbying the city for that, for additional funding there. The funding for Black Mill Initiative is baselined in the budget. This was the first year that the city put those funds in permanently, and so we're really grateful to the city for that. But it is a good program, and we do want to expand, so we'll keep pushing on the state side as well. In terms of your question on CUNY Prep, CUNY Prep is a program that has also been historically funded 100% by the city. It had historically been funded at about $3.5 million. In this year's budget, in the current year's budget, that funding was cut by $900,000. So it was a significant reduction compared to what the base is, about 25% reduction in the program. The program is run by the mayor's Commission on Economic Opportunity, CEO, and so they really control the funding for that program, and they decided to reduce it by $900,000. We have been in discussions with the new administration about it. We testified at the city council last month about our budget condition, and we included the concern that we have about CUNY Prep in there as well. So we're hoping to get a positive result in the mayor's executive budget.
To what extent are we able or not able to go to other outside sources, I mean, outside of city or state for a program like this? I mean, individuals who might want to earmark certain dollars to BMI because they also feel it's a very important initiative, you know, are we prohibited, prohibited from doing that? And, because it just seems that there are a number of other, I mean, with the number of things we're doing, we're looking outside of city and outside of state.
Mm-hmm.
It's not gonna be tenable for us to continue to do that. You know, and it just seems that we ought to have some other strategies, you know, that will enhance our funding for important programs like this. Is there any thought about that, or are we prohibited in any way?
We're not prohibited.
Does it cause any problems?
No, no, I think you raise a good point. You know, some of the successful programs that we've had, like the ASAP program, like the Single Stop Initiative that we have on our community college campuses, have been funded partially with private funds and with grants. And certainly, if there were folks out there that wanted to support some of the terrific programs like BMI or CUNY Prep, we would, we would certainly be open to that.
I mean, trustee Pentele and I, we were just chatting. I mean, why not go to somebody like Russell Simmons or something like that? You know, I mean, there are a number of people, and a lot of athletes who are out there. It just seems that there are a number of dollars out there, and we can be generating that, as opposed to just waiting and not being proactive in that area. So, I think.
No, it's a good point to, that the private sector needs to be tapped into on some of these programs. But, on CUNY Prep, that's generated a lot of interest. There was some, after we testified at city council, there was some media coverage of that, of that issue. And so, again, we're hoping for a positive result on CUNY Prep.
So I would just say, you know, the BMI was initially designed to address the underserved, who weren't participating in college, because of the historical legacy. And CUNY Prep, that's the population that they serve.
Mm-hmm.
And so, while I believe some, a lot of the initiatives on campuses have been quite successful to somehow not fund or have the pipeline of, that serves that community go away, is very troubling to me. So whatever I can do of leading assistance, because the logic of letting the pipeline of the critical cause of why black men aren't in, at, in college, to go away, just seems to be illogical, to spend money for them here and then not to have the pipeline addressed. So, I hope we can work diligently in getting those monies restored, especially for a program that has had such great success.
Okay.
We have suggested to the, to the city council higher education committee leadership, based on questions that were asked at the last public hearing, that there'd be a visit to CUNY Prep in the Bronx. And they are very favorable to making that happen, and we're gonna stay in touch with trustees with respect to that visit in order to shine the light.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any further questions or comments? There being none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our committee on fiscal affairs, and then open up the committee, subcommittee on investments. We don't need a vote to do that. We are now in the subcommittee on investment. First item of business is approval of our minutes for the meeting on February 3rd, 2014. I'll move the motion. Are there any, a second? Do you want a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, edits, changes? There being none, the minutes are carried. The first item of business is a verbal report on spending deliberations. We've got Janet Crone, our chief investment officer, will lead this charge, and Thomas Smith-Jepsen is here from Cambridge Associates.
Okay. We do this every April. We have these spending deliberations, and as with our policy, they're done according to NIMFA. So, first of all, for fiscal year 2015, we're recommending that we maintain the spending rate of last year, which is four and a half, at four and a half percent. So if you turn to page 22, what NIMFA requires is that the funds be categorized into similarly situated funds. So you can see that all the funds that are in the pool are classified into four similarly situated fund categories, those being academic support, institutional support, scholarships and fellowships, and instruction. And these comprise about 90% of total spending. On page 23, it shows the eight prudence factors mandated by NIMFA. And so for each of the fund categories that I just mentioned, we'll deliberate on the prudence of the proposed spending rate of four and a half percent according to these factors. However, most of the factors, as you can see, are universal, so they apply to all of the categories. But there is one, number two, which is specific to categories. So we'll start there on page 25, by going first through the purpose of the endowment for scholarships and fellowships, which represent 47% of our total spending. The purpose of these funds is obviously to attract and retain the best qualified students, but also to provide access to those who may not otherwise have access to a good education. So, they're very crucial to CUNY and its success. These are long-term funds that go theoretically in perpetuity, and they are funds that are designated by donors for this purpose. Page 26, under academic support, represents about 11% of our spending. These funds are for professional and technical programs, so for library resources, supplies, and lab support are a few examples of this type of spending. And so they form a key part of the spending from the endowment. Again, they're long-term funds designated by donors for this purpose. Institutional support represents 32% of total spending. These are for work-study programs that, for students that don't qualify for the normal work-study programs. And so they play an important role in one of our key goals, which is to provide access to education. Again, long-term funds, donor-designated. Instruction represents about 2% of spending. These are for faculty fellowships. Obviously, these are to attract and retain qualified faculty, so obviously, key to the success of CUNY. Again, long-term funds, donor-designated. Page 29 are some additional considerations with regard to purpose. As you know, historically, state appropriations have provided the bulk of the aid for, for the majority of the funds, and- the majority of the funds, and the pool is really not the primary source. We wish it were, but we need scale there to, to do more. But nevertheless, we have to balance the, the recommended spending amount against the current and prospective needs of, of our students, as well as the fact that the funds in the pool are for the most part designated by donors. So now I'll turn this over to Thomas to go over the universal factors.
Yeah, and I'll cover the six universal factors, and that, as the name says, are common for all of the, the categories. If we start off in the top right-hand corner, the duration and preservation of the endowment funds, the suggested four and a half percent spending rate is, we think, is maintaining the intergenerational value that Janet was talking about, where obviously these are perpetual funds, and, and the way we keep them perpetual is to set a spending rate that is, that is not too big so that we don't, don't hollow out the funds. If we go into the general economic conditions, we never know whether we're going to hit the four and a half percent in terms of return in any single year, but the, the four and a half percent is, is corresponding to what we think is the long-term returns of these funds. Actually, we are hoping to get a 5%, but there are factors in terms of valuations et cetera, that makes it somewhat uncertain whether we can achieve the 5% over the intermediate term, so in three to five years, because we are coming from an area now where, where things are quite overvalued. As you all know, in terms of inflation and deflation, we've been through a period of relatively low inflation, but there are things that, that could change that, that we're monitoring quite carefully. One of them is obviously the quantitative easing that we've been seeing, and that could have some inflationary effects if, if not conducted. We never know how, how these things are going to turn out. And finally, one of the things that have been keeping inflation low has been the unemployment rate that's been high, that is coming down, and that could raise inflation going forward if, if wage pressures come, come into play. So as I said, the expected total return, we are aiming for a 5%, which we think is achievable over a long-term period, but because we are in a, in a, in an elevated valuation environment, we do think that it's, it's prudent to aim a little bit lower than 5% on the, on the spending rate this year. Just in, in the event that we, we won't get to the 5% in the next three to five years, it's easier to increase the spending rate later on rather than to start off too, too high and having to, to cut it relatively drastically in order to preserve the, the capital. Finally, in terms of, of other resources of, that could be available, this is not, clearly not our area of expertise, but, but bear in mind that the resonator, if you will, of these, of these funds is to be spent eventually, and if the spending rate is in accordance with donor wishes, et cetera. So it is our understanding that there are no other resources that can be applied to cover this spending, and again, the four and a half percent is not imprudent in any way, shape, or form. And finally, the four and a half percent that is suggested is, is in line with the investment policy, policy statement, so, so that's, that's in alignment there.
So in light of everything, we're recommending to the committee that we adopt the four and a half percent spending rate, which should more than exceed the needs, because we found that the actual spending is, is less than the four and a half percent.
Okay, so we're maintaining the four and a half percent as we had in the past year. Okay, I'll move that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions or comments?
No.
There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, then this motion carries. Thank you. We now go on in the investment committee to some repurposing of funds. It's a pilot program. With us is Jane Davis from the council's office, and Janet will also participate in this. These, these two pilots, one is for Lehman College, the other is for Brooklyn College.
Right, as I, as I mentioned just, just now, that we have a lot of inactive funds in the pool, and the, the NIPMFA is relatively new, and, but there is a clause that provides for what they call old and cold funds. So if they're over 20 years of age and they have a market value of $100,000 or less, you can avoid the courts and go directly to the attorney general, subject to doing some other due diligence, of course, but, and so we have each year with the spending, and when we send that out to the colleges, we, we remind the schools that, about their inactive funds and encourage them to spend. In the case of inactive funds, many times it's because the purpose is outdated or it could be illegal. And so Jane Davis contacted the attorney general's office, and given, I guess, the newness of the regulations, they're really not set up to address these old and cold funds, but agreed to a pilot program, which Jane will discuss.
So we've provided you with a list of the funds at Lehman and at Brooklyn College that those colleges are interested in repurposing. The bulk of them, I think, probably come from the 1930s. In almost every case, the donor is either deceased, or we are unable to locate them because there isn't sufficient documentation, but where we could, we have attempted to contact the donor to get their approval. And the repurposing usually falls into two categories. It's either we're removing an illegal restriction, which in most cases has been because the, the description of the scholarship award was to be given to a woman, which we are not permitted to do under federal regulations and still get financial aid. Or in many cases, it limited the size of the award. It might say that the award's for $25, or it's a book, or $5 to purchase books, or it's a gold medal, or it's something that's not really prudent in these, in these times. So what we have done is either removed the monetary restriction, allowing the college to sort of set its own restriction in terms of the monetary, the amount that they're going to award based on inflation, based on how much is actually available to award. But in doing all of this, we've attempted to keep as close to the donor's original intent as possible. So if the award was originally for the highest, the student with the highest grade point average in biology, we'll still do it. That, that restriction, that part of the restriction has been retained, it just might be the monetary portion that's been changed. So pending the board's approval, we will submit all of these restrictions to the attorney general's office, and they'll review them and either accept them or reject them. And if this turns out to be a successful pilot, I suspect that we'll have a number of other colleges who want to participate as well, because this is freeing up a lot of money for scholarships and awards that they have not been able to give.
Is it all?
Just, just for the two colleges involved.
Right.
And the funds, it's, it's about $1.7 million that will be freed up to apply the spending rate to. But I think in total, with all of the schools, it's over $20 million in inactive funds, so.
Before we go moving the motion, just some questions. I'll start. The selection of Lehman and Brooklyn College, was that done in conjunction with the AG, or was it just?
They requested, they specifically made a request to repurpose.
Those colleges?
Those specific, those two. And I think, Jane, you made a comment, so, so if someone today creates a scholarship fund that is allowed for a man only, that violates law? You have to have man or one?
We would not be permitted to accept financial aid funds if, if we were to have.
Is that state or federal?
That's federal.
Federal, good.
Yes.
Any questions?
Having a difficult time sleeping last night, I actually looked at all of the repurposing. And I thought I did an excellent job of trying to accommodate the original intent, and I want that $5 prize.
And I suggest you buy an amp.
By, by any, by any chance that you need a magnifying glass?
You could actually blow it up on your.
Sure, on your iPad or whatever, make it larger.
In the same vein, did it work? Did you fall asleep?
Yes.
You can lend me that, I appreciate it.
All right, any other questions or comments? So we have two resolutions. I'll combine the two together if that's okay. One is, you know, authorizes the release of restrictions on various funds at Brooklyn College, which is listed as appendix A in our book, as well as for Lehman College, which is also an appendix A behind Lehman College. Upon prior notice to the attorney general of New York State, as and if required by the New York Prudent Management of Investment Funds Act, the senior vice chancellor for legal affairs is authorized to sign any documents necessary in connection with the authorizations granted hereby. I'll move these, this motion, that's been combined. Do we have a second?
Second.
Item's been seconded. Any further questions? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, these motions carry. We're now going to go into executive session for portfolio review and an update. We're in executive session, thank you.
Executive session?